invocation led by Pastor Josh Bartman, Christ Presbyterian Church. Please stand for our invocation and the pledge following the invocation.
Father, we do thank you for this opportunity to serve our people and the people of Mobile well. And Lord, we do ask that you would bless the endeavors of our city council. Thank you for the collective wisdom and love and service to your people who are here. And we ask that you give us much wisdom and grace. We ask that you'd forgive us our sins when we fail in our callings. We ask that you would give us greater humility to pour ourselves out, to think less of ourselves and more of what is good and right. And we ask that you would raise up Mobilians to be a continually growing citizenry that is good and self-consciously taking care of each other, that we would be the best of citizens, that we would be a joy to serve either in the mayor's office or on the city council. And so, Lord, we ask that you would bless this meeting. We pray for Mobile and we ask that you would be with us as we continue to pursue civility and discourse and honor towards all your image bearers. And Lord, in all of these things, we thank you for Jesus who died on the cross for our sins.
That's right.
Each council member. And may we see, may we find wisdom from you and in you alone. We pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Gregory is trying to reconnect and she wanted me to let you know that it says waiting for hosts to let her in. She had some technical... Great, thank you.
She was trying to get in during the prayer, couldn't let her in during the prayer.
Oh, yes ma'am, my mistake. That's right.
It's church time.
Roll call, President Manzi. Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Again, good morning. In response to national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the governor's supplemental emergency proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at Government Plaza. And in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through our live stream. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform minimum functions of the city of Mobile. If you would like to present any comments, we ask that you would email the City Clerk at cityclerk@cityofmobile.org. All of those comments will be acknowledged and they will be distributed to council members. As always, the meeting is live streamed and can be viewed on the city's website or the council's Facebook page. Any persons who signed up to speak will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the end of two minutes, a bell will sound indicating that you have 60 seconds to conclude your commentary. Any person who hasn't contacted the City Clerk's office in the appropriate time, fashion, and manner won't be allowed to speak during today's meeting. Those are the rules for this particular meeting and we thank you for your continued interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of November 3rd and 4th. You'll move.
Certainly.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved, great job as always.
Communications from the mayor. You're on mute, mayor.
He gets assistant in there.
Got it now, John. All right. Good to see everybody's faces this morning. I don't know about you, but when I woke up this morning and saw that Hurricane Ada's possible ultimate destination had changed, it sent a shiver through my body. I'm certainly hopeful that Ada dissipates like it's anticipated and maybe just have a rain event. We certainly don't need any more debris on the streets. Tremendously grateful for what our trash crews are doing along with the contractors and continuing to haul off trash and debris. Would just reiterate that it's very helpful to those that have just leafy materials, if they don't mind putting those in a green garbage bag or whatever and take them to Seals Park or to Langin Park because that's just one less stop that we have to make. You know, a lot of the houses I ride by, they'll have three or four piles of trash. And you know, what happens there is that when our truck pulls up, depending on the reach of the boom, boom, they may have to set in place, put the outriggers down at each of those piles. So the consolidation of trash in front of your houses, taking your own leafy materials to the two places where we're receiving them is again, very helpful and it will help us try to get the city cleaned up quicker. Last week, the governor issued another, an amended Safer at Home order, which removes some of the capacity limitations that have been placed on our businesses provide. But they also have to provide their customers, especially in restaurants with impermeable barrier, making sure they're wearing face covers. The idea is that many of our small businesses, not just the restaurants, you know, they are really hanging on by a thread. And this was the governor's attempt to try to let them have more patrons visit the restaurants, but at the same time, keeping those customers safe. Again, that's in a lot of these situations that are being made during COVID, none of my easy decisions and the governor's trying to thread a needle in this situation. Now, last week, we had a press conference. It's something that we've been talking about on a couple of occasions, having to do with building a thousand new or refurbished homes within the city limits by 2026. Now, those homes that will be either new or refurbished, you know, the focus is inside, what do we say, the I-65 loop, east of I-65. It's created a lot of conversation. Not only are we hoping that it creates conversation, but we're hoping it creates a lot of action because we will work with developers, we'll work with individual homeowners in order to refurbish homes, to build new homes. There's a lot of components to this and we're on standby at any time that the city council would like us to give them a detailed presentation of it, we'll be glad to do that. I would say as a kind of a sidebar that we're tremendously grateful that Council President Manzi committed over $300,000 of his CIP funds, you know, toward that effort, which will definitely help us get to our goal of 1,000. Actually, we believe that we can get to 1,000 and really we've got to push past 1,000. The next item has to do with Veterans Day. You know, it's unfortunate, like so many things during this COVID climate, that we're really are not going to be able to celebrate Veterans Day like we typically do. But that doesn't mean that most Americans still stand tremendously grateful for the veterans, those who've served to protect our country so that we can do the things that we enjoy doing. So tomorrow, I will participate in one event and I look forward to next year that we will be able to get back in high gear. But that, I would have to hasten to say though, that we don't need to just thank our veterans one day out of the year. It's something that we ought to be doing ongoing throughout the year. And I think that there are a lot of Mobilians that feel the same way about that. So thanks for anything and everything that our citizens are doing and support Veterans Day. Last comment I'd like to make has to do with the Nevis Road. You know, there have been a lot of conversations, been a lot of remarks made about it. And so, my remarks are going to hit on several areas. One is that this project is, this is the second year that it's been on the pay-go vote approved by the voters. It was first passed in November of 2018 when the county started doing the engineering on it. And recently, the addition to Nevis Road or the extension of Nevis Road was passed in the most recent pay-go program. Comment's been made about, is the road being built to city standards? Yes, it's being built to city standards because there are several city standards that exist around the city. They're not all the same across the city. A comment has been made that, you know, that we don't have other roads that are like this. Well, there are sections of Highway 90 that exist in districts four, five, and six. There are sections of Cody Road in district six and seven. There are districts, there are sections of Howell's Ferry Road in seven. There are sections of Knollwood in four and six. The majority of Gerby Road in four and six. And the lower end of Lloyd's Lane in six. Baker Street Extension in District Three. Paper Mill Road in two. Conception Street Road in District Two. Hamilton Boulevard in District Four are all similar construction. There have been comments made about, you know, the design is not safe. It's impossible for the city and the county to build a road and get approval, you know, if it doesn't meet certain design standards. And so, at this point in time, the design standards are set by the ALDOT and there's a specific, you know, standard that it does meet and we wouldn't do it otherwise. The conversation about whether this is a major street or a minor street and what does that mean? Now, there's two designations here. One of them is an ALDOT designation. The other is that the term major street or minor street was used by the consultant that we used when we did the city's street assessment. Now, so they deemed streets either major or minor or maybe service roads. So that was not in any correlation to what an ALDOT specification is. And so, if you look at ALDOT specification of Nevis Road, it is designated as a minor connector. Okay? Another comment has been made about this is not the way we do pay-go projects. Well, there have been pay-go projects that have been done this way. And I would hasten to add that I think that the collaboration between the city and the county, that you may see more pay-go projects done this way. If you think about this, that if you think about the number of CIP programs that our engineering department are having to deal with now, based on what it was, you know, five to seven years ago, you add on top of that the Tiger Project. You add on that the restore projects that are road projects. Plus, more pay-go money is being spent inside the city limits than what has been in the past. And so, our engineering department, as you know, is completely swamped with the projects that we're trying to turn out. And so, for the county to agree to run this project is really a huge benefit to the progress that needs to be being made. Our hope is that you will consider approving the ordinance that's presented to you before you today. And I'll make two other comments. This is very crucial to the growth of the city because of the property that will be opened up for development. Once the property, once the road is completed and developers decide that they want to build subdivisions, all of those subdivisions will be built to a subdivision standard, which is not unlike what we do see in West Mobile. You know, there will be curb and gutter, there'll be lights, but that'll be all the expense of the developer and not the city. And once the houses are built or as the houses are built, you know, sidewalks will be put in. But you don't put in the sidewalks before the lots and the houses are laid out or because you don't know where to put the sidewalks and because you'll break them up during construction. Anyway, but all that will come in due time. There's another undergirding factor of this, or another leg of this stool or chair. And that is the congestion that exists on Hillcrest Road and on Cottage Hill. Right now, those that are on Nevis Road that terminate into Hillcrest Road, instead of being able to drive across what will be the Nevis Road extension and go to Sully, they now have to go to Cottage Hill Road. Anybody that goes through the Cottage Hill, the Cottage Hill-Hillcrest Road intersection, they know it is really backed up. It is a nightmare as far as traffic congestion. And the Nevis Road extension upon completion will immediately relieve that. And so, if for those citizens that live in Oak Brown, Bridge Mill, Raleigh, Fallonlea, Winfield, Ala Palm, Stone Mill, Windsor, Heritage Hill, Oakley Place, Charlotte Woods, Kersha, all of those people that live in that area will benefit from the relief from the traffic congestion. The future of Nevis Road, the existing Nevis Road or the Nevis Road extension, is that it's not unlike other roads that we've had to build and we add on to in the future. You know, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, as it's built out, there's nothing to keep a future mayor or city council from deciding that money needs to be spent, you know, to widen that road, you know, to put lights on the road, to do different things that, you know, maybe would enhance it. But at this point in time, based on the amount of money that we have and based on the amount of money that the county is willing to apply to this project, now this is the best time to undertake and approve this project. So, thank you very much, Mr. President, for the opportunity to make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for your explanation on Nevis Road. It really cleared up a lot of portions that I had and was pondering my mind. But I wanted to back up with the trash pickup from the debris from the several hurricanes that we had. I understand that I read your newsletter last week and I believe that you stated that the city was not going to, I guess, continue to routine, you know, picking up just debris that's just going to be followed on a regular schedule, if I'm not mistaken. And if that's so, are we still in track to have everything picked up by Thanksgiving? And also, how long would the trailers would be at Seals Park and also at Lions Park for the citizens can go and deposit, you know, debris there? And the reason I asked those questions because I'm still getting a hit with different citizens calling me, believing that the city had forgot about them, which I assure them, ensuring them that the city has not forgot about them. It's just because they have, you know, the city has, you know, a formula that they are following in their routine. So if you can just follow that a little bit, I really would appreciate it.
Yes, I'd be glad to address that. First, for those citizens that are calling you, your answer is yes, we've not forgotten about them. I will say this though, councilors, that if next week, toward the end of next week, if you're still having those calls, I do think it'd be important to reach out and pass those calls on to us 311 so that we can make sure that we did not forget them, okay? Just somehow, they may have slipped through the cracks, but I think we need another week to make sure that we've, you know, made our circuit. When it comes to the leafy materials, I'm going to step out on a limb here without having talked to Colonel Delap, but I'm going to say that we will take those leafy materials all the way through the end of the month, through the end of November. And going back to the comments about trying to synchronize, putting the trash out on the current days that we have our schedule, as you know, and the entire city is divided up into the north side, the south side, and we have certain days we're supposed to pick up the trash. We were hoping, or we're shooting for next Monday, that we will actually be on schedule. Now, that's aggressive, but we know that we've got to push very hard to get there. So the plan has been that we wanted to take the contractors, send them through an area, let's just say, an area, let's say if you're supposed to put your traffic, excuse me, your trash out on Wednesdays or to be picked up on Wednesdays. We're wanting the contractors to go through on Tuesdays, you know, ahead of our crews so that when our crews come by, they're picking up the remaining debris and finessing the cleanup. But still, we have a lot of bulk out there. We're not there yet where we can say that the contractor is just one day ahead, but that's where we're trying to get to. And hopefully by next Monday is when we'll be there. And we're working, you know, all ends against middle to be there, but the only thing we can really do is just continue to communicate with where we are and let you give us the feedback of what you know of things that may be falling through the cracks.
How much longer are the contractors are going to be, you know, in the city? Do you know, Mr. Mayor?
Colonel Delap, can you answer that?
Yes. The contractors will be here probably all the way, there's different pieces. They'll be here to pick up the debris for several more weeks. Ideally, we have that done by the end of this month. We're shooting for Thanksgiving, but you know, towards the end of this month where they've been around and all that. Then the contractor will stay in the area where they have to then mitigate all the debris they've picked up, grind it, and haul it to a final disposal site. That'll probably take another month to do that. But we want to get all the debris picked up from the two storms by the end, you know, we're shooting for Thanksgiving, but by the end of the month. And then that will allow them to focus on that last task, which is the grinding and hauling of the material to its final disposal site, mitigate and clean up those sites. We need everyone's help in making sure that they're only bringing out the storm debris, not, you know, additional stuff and not bringing stuff out that is, you know, the regular trash beyond the regular trash day. That's the way we'll get complete and ahead and back on track. All right, thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Today's?
I've got a question for Colonel Delap. Colonel, there are some places that I've noticed in District Five where some of these giant water oaks were uprooted or fell during Sally. And the crews have come by and picked up some of it, but not all of it. And are they, when they, how's that going to be picked up? Is, are the, the mayor mentioned the contractor crews coming back through perhaps ahead of the regular bi-weekly schedule? But that's the question I'm getting. Is it, is it the crews came through my neighborhood, but they're still, when they came through, they got some of the trash, but not all the trash? And some of these big, big, big chunky items are left behind?
Yeah, so to answer your question, the way we've identified, the way we've generally been working is there was kind of an initial first pass through the city. They're working on a second pass through the city right now, although some people may have been, you know, bypassed on the first pass because it was maybe contaminated or mixed pile or they were out of the way. We didn't have the resource at the time to get in there. We're hitting all that right now in the second pass. We want to have that done in the next week or so. And then the final pass is really to get the items you're talking about, which are what we call the stumps and trunks. So all the really big trunks and stumps, they'll bring in special crews that have bigger equipment to grab those, pull those. Some of them, they'll cut up into smaller pieces and then haul those off. And so, those have been intentionally left in place as kind of that final pass to get those large bulky items.
And when do you think that that final pass would be complete?
Again, we're shooting by the end of the month. So that's the plan. You know, we'd love to have it by Thanksgiving, but I think by the end of the month, it's reasonable to have that done and then all those items policed up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
Yeah, Colonel, I had some of the same questions as Joel did. Some areas in my district too had the really big trees come down and some of them have been cut up to some degree, but they're still really large chunks on right of way. And so, I've been getting those kinds of questions too, like when are these going to be picked up? How quickly? Because some of them are, you know, out into the roadway quite a bit as well.
Yeah, so same answer, you know, that it's intentional and deliberate because again, it requires heavier, actually, believe it or not, larger equipment than they have with the normal trucks, even though those trucks look big, the lifting mechanism isn't necessarily any stronger than the ones we have for ours. So they leave those big bulky items to the very end. So that's, you know, you can tell the constituents if they call or email you that that's, they know where those are at, they know they're going to come back. And it's the final kind of pass to pick those up, the stumps and trunks. And we should have, we're shooting to have them done by the end of this month. So we realize it's, you know, an inconvenience and if it's a clear safety hazard, we'll go and address it. But otherwise, we know it's an inconvenience to see it there, but that's how all the contractors all along the coast are working and they do it all the same way. And it's just, it's easier for them to manage the equipment and resources in that manner. And it's also the most effective way to try and get it all cleaned up. But we're working, as you know, seven days a week, sunup to sundown, with our crews and their crews to get this done as quickly as possible. We appreciate your constituents and citizens' patience. And if they truly have been missed, you know, in a very off-reach somewhere where we've had, we found a few of those, please let us know. But we have not forgotten and we've got a very detailed and accurate list of everywhere we've been and everywhere we still need to go.
I have a question. If I may.
Ms. Rich.
Colonel Delap, in, on city properties such as a park, I've had some calls about large trees either hitting people's fences or taking out a venue. And also, there's a large tree that's sitting in a huge drainage program. So are those done through FEMA? Because it was through the storm that those trees were toppled. But when can people expect those kind of improvements to take place for removal?
So we've done some, but not all that. Again, the contractor, our FEMA contractor will do some final removal of trees that were damaged. Let's say a huge limb came off, maybe the tree split in half and half was in the street. We've already removed that, but the other half of the tree's still there precariously dangling. We'll come back or still standing, we'll come back, they'll come back and cut that up and haul that off. That's kind of that last phase, dump and trunks and doing those. That'll be done by the contractor. Those in the parks, we've done most of those. We just cut up the debris like in the dog parks. We just cut up the trees there, but we have to get in and haul them off. The contractor's aware that they've been cut up and they'll be hauled off. And the ones in the canals, we will get, particularly if those are city right-of-way trees, even when we had one that we've already removed, we did right before the last storm that was in a, you know, it started in a citizen's property, kind of right on the edge of a citizen's property in ours, but it was blocking the waterway. So we had to get in and obviously remove that right of way because we didn't want to create any undue flooding. So those few locations, if, please make sure, I think we know where most of them are, but feel free to pass them on to us for, you know, double check on that. And then we will get in and remove those out of our waterways, our canals, because we do not want them damaging those or creating any additional flooding. But those will get removed, either by their crews or ours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel Delap, and to all of the hardworking staff with our trash crews and the contractors and every city employee that's been out there, sunup to sundown, helping us to abate this issue. We certainly appreciate you greatly. Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk?
We have a proclamation.
You're on mute, Mr. Williams. You're on mute, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's truly my pleasure to join the president and all the city councils, as well as the mayor, in making a proclamation for this week and for a special citizen. for this week and for a special citizen. This proclamation reads, whereas every year on November 11th, our nation honors the service and enormous sacrifice of our veterans who have been vital to defending our country, maintaining our freedoms, and preserving precious liberty. And whereas, since the inception of our country, brave men and women have honorably served, fully aware that their service could result in physical and mental scars or making the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas, every Mobilean, Alabamian, and American is forever grateful for their selfless service and sacrifices. In honoring that, we have a sacred duty to care for and support our veterans and...
Whereas, we have a large veteran population in Mobile, and for many, it is their final resting place, including at the historic Oaklawn Cemetery. And whereas Mr. Eddie Erby Jr.'s Herculean efforts has transformed the once-neglected hallowed grounds to a cemetery where grave sites are once again fit for the people who served and gave their lives for this country. And whereas, for these reasons, in addition to honoring our veterans this year, we honor Mr. Erby's invaluable efforts. Now therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council and the mayor, do hereby proclaim tomorrow, Wednesday, November 11th, 2020, as Veterans Day and Mr. Eddie Erby Jr. Day in the city of Mobile. And we urge all of our citizens to not just thank our wonderful veterans, but also join the cause of ensuring that, that they are properly honored for their dedication and service to us all done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 10th day of November, 2020. It's signed by all members of the Mobile City Council and our Mayor, William Stimson.
Erby.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory.
Yeah, many thanks to Mr. Erby and everybody in his team who's been working on the cemetery. You know, Mr. Erby is also very active in the Buffalo Soldiers, and we hear from him quite a bit on that. I also just want to point out, you all probably saw that one of our former city employees who recently died is being honored tomorrow in the Veterans Day events, Raphael Maharaj. So, I'm really happy that he is being recognized for all of his efforts as well on Veterans Day.
Wonderful, wonderful. And I just would like to say, on behalf of all of the citizens who live along Holt Road, on behalf of all the families who for, for one reason or another are not able to go and properly take care and maintain their family members' final resting place, a great and huge thank you to Mr. Eddie Erby Jr. You are making a difference. And I mean, I would encourage anyone who has extra time, any social group, sorority, fraternity, any group, motorcycle, gardening clubs, any groups that would have some extra time that you would dedicate a weekend to go out and join Mr. Eddie Erby Jr. in helping to bring that cemetery back to its rightful place. Thank you, Mr. Eddie Erby Jr. Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So move. Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted.
Joe, do what he's supposed to do.
We need to go ahead and declare the agenda for COVID-19.
And move the agenda item.
He's, he's back.
He's back.
I'm sorry. We are without you, Joe. I believe we adopt the agenda and, and establish all listed, all items listed as essential COVID-19 items, as essential COVID-19 items, and that we take item 6840 and bring it up to be considered immediately after presentations and petitions of other communications to the council.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for wave with the noise ordinance on November 21st, on Janu Drive, and December 4th on Moffett Road.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Brian Fuenmayor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Fuenmayor. My address is 300 North Water Streets, Mobile, Alabama, 36602. Good morning and buenos dias. I come here before you representing the reactivated Human Relations Commission of the city of Mobile. Just to give you all a progressive, a progress report on our work in creating a sustainable foundation and framework in order to fulfill our duties pursuant to Resolution 60-092 of the city council. First, we wanted to thank you all for making all your appointments to the commission and also for the opportunity for us to serve on for our community. We have been having a very engaging commission from everyone, and we've been meeting every two weeks as well. We almost have a complete board with only remaining member being a representative from the advisory board, which we already started working on. Our own Kimberly McKean has created a beautiful logo for us. And we also launched a Facebook page, Instagram, Twitter, MailChimp, and email accounts. We have also voted on a set of bylaws, which was created with the help of Mr. Charlie Potts with the Mobile Bar Association and others, of which we emailed to you a signed copy yesterday. We also voted on a modest startup budget of $1,000, which we have also emailed each of you. We are requesting your assistance with this from your discretionary funds. We're striving to be very good stewards of any and all city funds. One of the items that we're requesting is a $200 membership to IORA, which is short for International Association of Official Human Rights Agencies, in order for us to start receiving training, best practices, and other valuable information that we need. We feel that a member, being a member of this international organization is instrumental in being a successful Human Relations Commission. Other items in this budget includes funds for a P O Box, a Zoom account, social media marketing, and prints. We still have a lot of work needing to be done before we can start receiving public complaints, but we hope to be able to launch at the beginning of January. Thank you all for your time and everything you do for our great and beautiful city of Mobile.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Mr., can you pronounce that last name one more time?
Sure, it's Fuenmayor.
Fuenmayor. Thank you, President, Fuenmayor. And keep up the good work. We're certainly appreciative of you all's efforts. And I've been in contact with my appointee, Ms. McKean. I know she is very active in wanting this to work very well. And, and we wish you all the best, and thank you for this update.
Thank you.
Okay. We did receive a request from Reggie Hill regarding 08818. And that is, the question was, will any of the computers be utilized, be utilized in our community centers? And if so, what locations? And that has been answered for him. Those computers are for police administration. Essential COVID items being introduced for the first time. That's right, I was about to. Essential COVID items being introduced for the first time, 6840. Can I suspend the rules in order to?
I thought we did that.
No, we didn't suspend the rules to take it up.
We'll have to do that, and then we'll do it again later on. Mr. Joe? You going to suspend the rules?
To take it out of order.
I, I, I made motion to bring it forward. Someone else is going to have to make the motion to suspend the rule.
Our motion to suspend the rules to take in consideration Resolution 60840 up front to the front of the agenda.
Second. No, we've already done it to the front of the agenda. We just need to consider it. We need to make the, suspend the rules to consider it.
To consider, to consider. Suspend the rule for media consideration of 68, 6840.
Second.
Properly motioned and second. Any discussion?
Yes. Thank you. As I said in pre-conference, it goes hand in hand with an opportunity to, which you, I got this as soon as I created it or in working after meeting the mayor. My meeting was not till Friday at 10:30, so that...
Yes, this is just to suspend the rule.
But I'm trying to get you into the position to want to do that, to make sure that it is moved up.
I think we'll suspend the rules. I'm willing. We'll take that speech once.
I thought we had done that when he mentioned it earlier.
No, no. All we did was...
So, so...
We voted suspending rule.
We'll vote now to suspend the rule. We've had a discussion, all in favor of suspending the rule.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone in opposition? All right.
6840. Request the county to hold the funds earmarked for Nevis Road Extension Project until the city is able to commit the necessary funds to construct the project in accordance with city construction standards.
So, move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. I received a phone call yesterday from one of the owners of the property. And she has sent me a text that she would like me to read for the record and for you all to hear. So, if you'll give me that opportunity, and I will get this to the clerk's office for, for the minutes later. And it goes, "As a property owner, most impacted by the actual road, I was not made aware of the city's standards that should be considered. I believe the road is important enough for our city's future to be done properly and additional funding sources be sought. I am supportive of the project and took great care to make the right-of-way donation decision. However, it should be done properly. The area could become a unique mixed-use development that would attract residents and businesses alike." And this is from Gay E. Gandy, G-A-N-D-Y. I will get this to the clerk. Now, if I could be given an opportune time again to talk about the resolution that we are now debating.
Absolutely, Ms. Rich.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I think it's very important that you hear that from an owner of the property who was not aware that there are standards that a development would have to make in order to come on board if they were opening it up under their own volition. The, the council, like I said, I had a meeting with the mayor. It was obvious, and you heard the mayor's comments about his decision on wanting this to move forward at this point. So, our chance, my chance to meet with his administration, which you know we can't direct, and I can only question and ask why they got to that idea of making it not to a standard that all of us would expect in our city limits, especially into the 21st century. All of the streets that the mayor mentioned were not created. Some go back to the 60s, 50s, 70s. And some have been widened since then at a great cost in order to make sure that people, you know, can get about. Nevis Road is, will be a release valve in my office first hearing about the county's interest in seeing the road come to fruition was something that I supported. I met with one of the primary owners at the time. We did not discuss who would take the lead. It was a very cordial meeting, and he just wanted my interest in seeing the road, you know, open up. And of course, I immediately saw the possibilities that would in, come from this. And that goes back about three or four years now, my meeting then. I checked in with the, with the engineering department and actually was first approached by the engineering department before I even met that primary owner, not this person who just contacted me yesterday for the first time, but also has a great interest in the properties. The idea that the city was interested in seeing the road as a traffic tool and a way to get people in a corridor that's not rural, but is very much suburban and urban. And he asked me to go see one of the commissioners that turned out not to be the commissioner where this road would interface with. That would be Jerry Carl. And so, Jerry Carl took the lead with getting funding on the Pago program. The city is preparing to adopt new zoning codes that will implement the vision for the map of Mobile. The complete draft zoning overhaul known as the Unified Development Code, or the UDC, addresses many issues and reflects modern planning and zoning best practices. The road improvement that is being promoted today does the exact opposite. I was never included with the mayor or his administration for any of the discussions about what the road would look like, what was being planned, who would take the lead. So, so much for transparency. And I'm sure all of you would feel kind of upset or saddened by that when it's such a big project in your district. The mayor asked the county to build this road in order to bypass the city's codes. That's exactly what we're doing, which would mean curb gutters, closed ditches when possible, and of course, street lights. The mayor was not transparent in how much he supported this major project until the Nevis Road money that you're asked to move over to the county was made an agenda item. That's how, when my office learned all of the moving parts and I had to get up to speed. Citizens that will be impacted by this development were not bought to the table, myself included, and we each represent about the same amount of citizens. It's obvious from the support this administration has for this inferior project that the map of Mobile, which has cost us taxpayers millions of dollars and was intended to uplift the quality of our city's growth, was never intended to address Mobile's long-term preservation, revitalization, and growth. The project before us will attract piecemeal inferior growth. It is a wonder Mobile continues to be in the top 25 cities of losing population. For those of you that will use this excuse that this is a way not to have to annex, but just grow within our borders, it's really a sad day for Mobile since there are some representatives today that think citizens will be attracted to an inferior development with open ditches and no street lighting. I predict if and when this project is completed under these conditions, it will result in more people leaving the area than we will attract. I must admit, however, we may attract a gas station or a strip mall to light up the area. A major roadway built to city standards would have the opposite impact. Nice subdivisions, perhaps recreational areas, retail compatible to the surrounding new homes won't happen with this dark two-lane highway. Slow this down, don't kill it. Find the appropriate... Find the appropriate funds to build to city standards. That is the last part of the resolution on how we could go about this. Let the citizens of District Six have a say in this project. I'm sure that each of you would not want this built in your districts. If anything, we are trying to undo things like this built in our districts at great cost to the city's taxpayers. Please respect one-seventh of the population. Slow it down. We will not lose any of the investments that have been earmarked through Pago. No county commissioner can move that because it was voted on at the polls. It is just not adequate funding in order to bring back a program that will give the citizens of Mobile the best bang for their investment. This is, this is, to me, contrary to having all our citizens come out now almost five years ago, maybe more, when we started with our charrettes for the map of Mobile. We talked about connectivity. We talked about making sure that deli, development, especially commercial development, dovetailed well into re, into residential. Here is an opportunity with seven hundred and fifty acres to be opened up, to have its roadway, to be a corridor from the very beginning that attracts good quality development and not the piecemeal that will be the template for what's getting ready to do. And again, I, I just hope that you will support this resolution. I would certainly support each of you. And again, there's no reason not to, um, slow us down. The county commission is not getting to this for another two to three years, so there is no rush to get the funds over to the county. I'm not sure if the plans are absolutely completed today. I don't know if the rights-of-way have come to become into the public sector yet. And the right-of-way, as my understanding, is a hundred feet wide. So that would designate a major roadway. If it was to be a minor road, then it wouldn't be as wide as that. And I understand that sidewalks would come with the development. But if you just have ditch after ditch, that's not going to happen. And, um, again, it's all about planning. We have excited this city and our citizens about planning. Please don't take a new area of town and do it the same way that we have to correct for years to come. It's, it's not, it's not the investment citizens want, and they deserve better. And I hope that you'll work with me on seeing this resolution come forward and make a difference in the district, not a negative. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms, Mr. Richardson, and then I've got a notice that Mayor Simpson would like to offer some commentary. Mr. Richardson?
Okay. Uh, I would just like to say that, uh, I support, uh, the Honorable Councilmember from District Six, uh, Resolution. Uh, she's only asking us to, to, um, postpone this for a while until the funding can be identified that will make this, bring this Nevis Road up to city standards. That's all she's done. She's not trying to kid it, uh, anything like that. She's saying that in order for this, uh, roadway to have, um, curbed and guttered sidewalks like, like, like a regular city street should have, it's going to require funding that has not been identified. And she want to wait until, because she would get, um, she herself will be getting funding each year from CIP and possibly other funding can be located, uh, to be put into the project to bring it up to par. Um. Uh, when Mayor Simpson made his comments, he named numerous of streets that, that would fit what they are trying to do to Nevis Road, would be a match. I venture to say now, one of those streets was built after twenty-eleven, when we voted in, uh, the streetscape ordinance, saying we will build no more streets without curb, gutter, sidewalks, lighting, trees. We will build no more to fit that. And when we, when we passed that ordinance, the planning commission kicked in, and they start requiring developers to do the same. Now, uh, in District Two, on the corner of Catherine and St. Stephen Road, was a mechanic shop. And, uh, this gentleman, uh, he was my neighbor for years, um, set out to expand and renovate his, his business. Um, he needed more space. And, uh, the planning commission came back and said, "Oh, you can do that. You, you're going to have to plant trees along Catherine Street and along St. Stephen Road." And they told him the kind of trees he's going to have. Well, there is absolutely no dirt on his property, none. It's all cement. They ever, they, they said, "Well, if you want, if you want to renovate, you got to dig up the cement. We got to have trees on the side of Catherine Street and trees along St. Stephen Road." He canceled the project because he said it's, it's not worth it for him to dig up. See, he can understand if you got, uh, you know, got some ground out there that you can plant the trees on, but you got to dig up your cement. The only, I'd say, I'd say this, that the city has been dutiful in making people obey what we voted in twenty-eleven. And we shouldn't be the one to violate our own laws or rules. So what, what the mayor proposes is that, is that we require all the developers, anybody who want to build a street into their development, uh, you got to build it up to city standards. That is, you got to put curb, gutter, sidewalk, lighting, the whole thing in there. But when the city get ready to build, we can build some ghetto, some, something substandard. We can build whatever we want to build. And who is out there bad enough to stop the city from building the, uh, 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 substandard street? We don't have to build it because we building it ourselves. We've built it the way we want to build it. The law is passed for them, but it does not apply to us. We build what we want to build. I think that it's foolishness. I think we ought to be the leader. I think we ought to be the first one to demonstrate that we're going to obey what we, what we're requiring other, other citizens to do. We, we ought to be the drum major. We ought to be the drum major wreck, whatever we need to be, in carrying out these policies. We ought not to be the one to say, "We're not going to build our street up to standards. We're not going to put no lights out there. We're not going to have no curbs. We're not going to have no sidewalks for the citizens to walk in. We're not going to have no gutters. Who do they think we are? We're not going to spend no money on that. That's what we're going to make them do. We can do what we want to do. Well, how the citizens going to walk? Walk in the road. I'm building no sidewalks on Nevis Road. If you want to go down Nevis Road, that whole mile, walk in the street. Because we are not building any sidewalks. That is not the message we ought to, and we have to lay it off for a year. We have to lay it over two years to get it right. And I'll tell you what, that, if they build it, you will be just like St. Stephen Road. I came to this city in nineteen fifty-eight, St. Stephen Road. It's the same as it was when I got here. I've been begging for twenty-four years. You know how much I got? Not one dime. The mayor, it's the chairman of the South Alabama, reading the planning commission. Not one time they just spoke a one word to help St. Stephen Road. I had to make that. I, 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 you're not going to cut me off.
You need to, you need to pay attention to the rules. Make all the comments you want, but you cannot make this personal.
Your time will come.
You need to shut it down.
Mr. Williams, uh, Ms., Mr. Richardson.
That's enough, that's enough.
We, we, we got to abide by the agreed-upon rules that all of us agreed upon longstanding. Uh, if you could continue your commentary, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you very much. I'm saying that I think the Honorable Woman, Best Rich for District Six, is right. Let's get it right the first time. We may not have this opportunity again, and the evidence is St. Stephen Road. They didn't do it right the first time, and we can't get any help in doing it right now. And if she sits there and allow them to build a street and not do it right, she will be sitting there moaning and whining about that street for the next fifty years. I'm through with this program.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Uh, Mayor Simpson?
Mr. President, you know, unless I'm confused, it's this administration, it is the only administration that's ever given any money for St. Stephen's Road to do a study. Uh, so, uh, we have given money for that study. And, um, Councilman, uh, Richardson obviously disagrees with that. But, uh, you know, we'll be glad to follow up and do some fact-checking. Unfortunately, I believe that some of what Ms. Rich said is misleading, unfortunately. Um, but I won't, uh, engage in, um, controversy. We'll be glad to set the record straight, though.
Uh, any further discussion?
Uh, just a quick question for the.
Ms. Gregory?
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor, in your discussions with the county, how did it come about that the county would do the work rather than the city?
So it never, I mean, that's one of the accusations that I would like to clarify. I never said anything in the county about you taking the lead. This was proposed by the county as something that would help, uh, out in that part of West Mobile. They approached us, said what they wanted to do, explained it to me, what the opportunity was for traffic congestion, what the opportunity was for future development, said they would take the lead, and I said, "That's fine."
What, what about, um, communications with the, the property owners out there? I know there are several groups, um, and LLCs, whatever, out that way. I spoke to, um, one of the owners yesterday. Um, so I'm just wondering what kind of discussions you and/or the county have had with the property owners out there about how they feel about just basic, a basic road versus something more upgraded?
Those conversations were held by the county, having to do with the right-of-way, where it would go, and what the road would look like.
So, so nobody, uh, was disagreeable about donating their property to put the road through?
I, I didn't engage in those conversations about what the road would look like or where it would go. That was all, uh, determined by the county.
Okay. The one property owner that did contact me yesterday, um, had no problems with it. In fact, I asked them if they had any, um, developers out there looking to, um, go in and do some work, and he said that they had been contacted. And, uh, his thing was that we need a road out there to enable, you know, these potential builders to get to the property to do the work in the first place. And so they, they really had no, no problem with, uh, the road as it is. I haven't spoken to the woman that Mrs. Rich, uh, mentioned, though.
If I could comment?
Further discussion?
Yes, sir.
If I could comment?
I think I heard Mr. Davis, then we'll come right to you, Ms. Rich.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to have to oppose this resolution. Um, there's, there's no evidence that this road as planned is not being, uh, built to the appropriate standard. As a matter of fact, what we've heard from our own attorney is that there's no legal requirement that it be built, uh, to the standard that's supported by this resolution. Um, there are, in addition, as far as I know, hundreds of miles of city streets that don't have sidewalks, don't have, uh, don't have, uh, that have open ditches next to them. Uh, it's already been pointed out by the mayor that Highway ninety, as it goes through District Five and some of the other districts, doesn't have any of these amenities. Uh, these are streets that have tens of thousands of people every single day on. Now, unfortunately, we live in a world and a city of limited resources. If we had the money, we could build every single street we build with curb and gutter and sidewalks and cover all the ditches and build all the sidewalks and make every single street a Taj Mahal. But we don't have resources like that. And so we've got to allocate resources where those resources are most needed. And before we go out and spend a bunch of money to put sidewalks where there currently aren't any houses, I think we need to put sidewalks where there are houses. Before we cover, before we put covered drainage ditches where there are no houses, we ought to cover some of the drainage ditches we have in District Five that are open drainage ditches where people actually live. Now, the choice we have before us today is between not doing the project or ending, or, or having an open-ended financial commitment. Because what the resolution asked us to do is hold out until the funding can be found to, to make these improvements regardless of the cost attached to it. Now, if I'm presented with those two choices, I'm going to elect to go ahead with a, with the commitment from the city and the county that we have now to build the road, which can always, like a lot of our other roads, be improved later on down the road when we actually have some people living out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We will now hear from, uh, Councilwoman Rich.
Right. The sidewalks would come on as each lot is developed. That, that's the way we get a public improvement. But if there's open ditches and no way to make that connectivity which people expect, um, it, it becomes inferior. As far as, um, the, and that's the disappointment I have with the administration, the approval that it's okay to do it to this standard. Because this standard in the twenty-first century should be unheard of because we've already moving to proper planning. The mistakes made out west was because there weren't people already living there. You are going to open seven hundred and fifty acres of property, make a thoroughfare through it that will be a conductor of traffic and not create it to city standards. Being an advocate for our standards should be at the top of our chain, so to speak, because it sets the tone for future development. And I don't think that any council person would point with pride to have this done in their district. It, it's not the developer or the landowner that, um, uh, Councilwoman Gregory spoke to, said that they've had interest. Well, if the city just sits back and waits until that landowner wants to get to his property, he would have to, or she would have to build to city standards. And the road is already on a map, even if it's just the line. The county's decided it's to have a hundred-foot right-of-way because it is serving people out in the county, so they are a participant, but the road is inside our city limits. Don't talk about long-range planning. Don't talk about doing it right when some communities can have villages and have resources. This is brand-new. This is an opportunity to do just this in this area and not do it so that it's hurry up, put the road in, open it up for the benefactors of the private side. Because if we just waited, then the economics would make that happen, and they would have to build to city standards. Unless they got a really sweet deal from the city and could build to standards that, I'm not saying the road is going to collapse when it's built to a standard, but it's not a city standard that in modern times has been done. There's no reason to create a new road without lights, curb, gutter. It's just absolutely unfeasible to me. Wait until you have the resources. Work with the owners. Work with other economic development money if you think that's such a good tool. Plan it so there are resources. It's two major creeks out there. It could be a wonderful, uh, look what we're spending on, on, on the, on Three Mile Creek to make that something that's a positive instead of a negative. Why are we ignoring a segment of town? It's not a racial issue, but it's certainly a mistreatment here on standards that people expect. And that's something that doesn't sit right with me. It can wait and do it correctly. And it's not waiting forever. It becomes a priority then other resources are found. Why the million five out of surplus? We have seventy million in surplus. It wasn't just necessary enough. And allowing the county to take the lead was the permission of the administration. My office was not at the table making that decision or even asked. That should not sit right with any of U.S. council people. I urge you to give this opportunity a chance and not send it off. Because we just have to hurry up and do it and get people to their property and do it incorrectly. We're not helping anyone in the public sector by doing it that way. We're not helping. And our job is to be helpful and to listen to our citizens.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that developers were, were, were viewed this council meeting today. And what we are really telling the developers is that the city has no legal standard for its streets. Because that's what I just heard. That there are no legal standards forbidden in the street. So when the, when the city come back, comes back and tell a developer, you got to have curb, gutters, sidewalks, they're going straight to court. And say, show me a law that says this is what I got to do. Because what I'm hearing is that we are making people do that, but we don't have no specific law that's requiring them to do that. I think that's sad. If we don't need a law, we ought to have a law by, by next week. No developer ought to be left to build a street to their own volition, to, uh, whatever, to their own whims. Whatever, how they feel is how they're gonna build the street. City ought to have legal standards for a street. And I believe we have a legal standard. But if we don't, we need a legal standard. We should not be sending a message to these developers that we have no standard, that you are free to do whatever you will when you develop. You don't have to conform to nothing because the city has no standard.
Is, is there any further discussion on this particular resolution?
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Uh, thank you so much. Um, I do understand Mrs. Uh, Rich's passion and concern, you know, what she's stating. And, you know, I agree one hundred percent, you know, with her about, you know, we are in the twenty-first century and everything. But, you know, as I sit here and think about just over a month ago during the budget time, when Mr. Richardson had posed, you know, a million dollars for St. Stevenson Road, you know, I voted against it because I was like, you know, for money, it's a sitting in a pot and don't know what the timeframe is going to be. You know, why would I just have some money to sit in somewhere and not know when it's gonna move, how it's gonna move? It could be there for the next thirty years. And to me, this is the same boat that, you know, if we go along with Mrs. Rich, um, resolution and, you know, just say, hey, we just keep this million five here and we don't have no timeline. At least we do have a timeline that the county is going to construct in the next three or four years. But with the, um, the, you know, but with this going forth now and to say that we just slow this down, we don't know when the timeframe is going to be where we can have the new gutters and the, the closed ditches and et cetera. And, um, pretty much, you know, I think that we should pretty much just go along. At least we do have a, a hard, you know, a timeline that we can actually do this. Also, one of my biggest concerns too is that, you know, I was criticized over wanting to, um, stop the fighting of, um, growing Mobile. And with the seven hundred some odd acres that's out there, and this is just a pathway that the city can contribute some funding to go along with the, um, growing of Mobile to develop the seven hundred some odd acres to have more residents inside of the city limits. I don't want to say that I'm not trying to stop the growth, but I'm willing to just continue the growth of Mobile. And as the mayor has stated earlier, we can always go back and we can go ahead and, you know, go back and, and do the ditches, go back and do the curb, go back and do the lights. But right now, we're just looking for a path forward. Um, our attorney, excuse me, our mayor also said there was several standards that we, you know, the city halves. Um, I listened to our mayor and also I listened to our attorney that he said that it was a recommendation. So therefore, I do understand Mrs. Rich exactly where she's coming from, you know, just, you know, the standards, the twenty-first century and et cetera. But right now, just looking at the biggest picture, I say, I don't know how long this million five gonna sit here in this pot. Versus, I do know that if we go that route, versus I do know if we go the route that's before us, um, for the last couple of weeks, they're only gonna be there for two or three years or even less than that. Um, that we know that we can go ahead and grow Mobile and hopefully we go more revenue within our city. And again, I do applaud Mrs. Rich for the, all, her hard work and I understand what she's trying to do. But at the same time, I don't want a, a pot of money that's to sit there. And that pot of money can be used in District Three, could be used on Michigan Avenue, could be used on DIP. Versus, you know, it could be go ahead and be used out on Nevis Road to go ahead and grow the city to where we can, you know, grow and have more taxes within our city limits versus just sitting down, you know, sitting in a pot fourteen, fifteen, or twenty years. And again, you know, the same way I voted against St. Stevenson Road, I don't know, a month and a half ago because I don't know what the timeframe is. I don't know what the timeframe is too. If we go ahead and go along with Mrs. Rich's resolution and, and just money just sitting there. But again, Mr. Rich, I do applaud you for your hard work, but unfortunately, I won't be able to support this on today.
Mr. President?
I'm just gonna second what CJ said. Uh, Mr. Richardson?
If we withhold our vote because we don't know when our project is gonna be completed, then we should be voting on CIP at all. Today, uh, there's a contract for District Four for twenty nineteen CIP. This is twenty twenty-one. CIP. Uh, I got, I got the flow now.
You said-
I got the flow.
I said a thing. You accused me of doing so, and I did it.
But you don't try that on nobody else but me.
Oh, I, I-
Leave me alone, John. Leave me alone.
Roger.
Go, go to, go to-
Meet Madam Clerk.
Go to District, you go to the sidewalks in District One. Four years ago, the money that was put in there, they had built sidewalks all up O'Shea Road, all, all over around the city. The money is still sitting there. Nobody tell me, oh, you, you gonna be on the, you gonna be up there trying to next week. Don't worry about that. No, it's not on the agenda. To come from I sixty-five to Highland Avenue to connect with the Florida Street Development. For four years, the money been sitting there. Figgers Park, three years it been sitting there. Trying to build an entryway and honoring our citizens as we do that. All of the money is there, everything is there. Nothing has been done. So I'm saying until the city of Mobile, uh, hire enough engineers over there. We hire, we are hiring people because, because, uh, our council president, about once every week or two, sends of us the name of another purchase being hired, but they're not going over to engineering. They're not going over there that can help over these projects. We are running, we got projects dating back to twenty seventeen. So we take that position. We won't vote on anything because we got Project CIP, Project, that, that's going back to twenty seventeen that haven't, that, that have not been acted on. So, the last thing I'm gonna say, we're gonna open up over seven hundred acres that's privately owned. I don't see where we ask those developers to give us one dime toward curb, gutter, sidewalk, not one dime lighting. That's who gonna get over like fat cats. We don't own a, we don't own one acre of that land. It's private land, seven hundred some acres of private land. We gonna open it up for them to start building something. We done asking them for nothing. It ought to be a public-private partnership. Why are we, can't we speak? We not deaf and dumb. We should be confronting those landowners. Saying for us to do this, this is what we're gonna request that you do. They're gonna make the money, not the city.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Richardson.
If, if I could comment, and I appreciate Mr. Small's commentary about my passion, because I know you sense it. This money is going to sit even if we move it because it's not supposed to be given to the county until they are ready to start construction. Construction is two to three years out. So to not allow this pathway to go forward where we look at other resources that could create a street that is a standard that all of us strive for in our districts, either making improvements on current inferior roads or through development. This does not change the money sitting. The, read the agreement. It's not, that's why I don't understand why my office wasn't worked with. Because I would have looked at those plans and said, what are you building? This is not what people expect in any district. This, th- there are no legs to the stool on this particular transfer of money. It doesn't happen yet. Give this an opportunity. Now, I'll, I'll, I'll grant you, I am behind the eight ball on behalf of my citizens because of the administration's understanding of why this is okay to do. But it lacks proper planning. It lacks an entry point that people are going to want to develop appropriately. There isn't a reason to rush this. The money is going to sit.
Uh, any further commentary on this particular resolution? Now, we've got a motion, a second. All in favor of the resolution? There'd be no, the sound of aye?
Aye.
All in, all in opposition?
No.
Opposed? As I, as I hear it, I heard two in support and one in, uh, one abstention and then four in opposition. Ma'am, see the clerk?
Essential COVID items mailed over. Thirty-four zero four zero, ordinance to amend chapter thirty-four of the city code regarding short-term lodging and rental.
I would move to lay this over for two months, and I was looking at the calendar earlier. Um, we could look at, um, I think it's December nineteenth as a possible.
That's only one month.
That's only one month.
One month.
Alright.
Time flies.
Hey, don't be slowed down, twenty twenty. Let it go.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, so I guess we're looking at, wow, uh, January. Yeah.
Where we got, Madam Clerk?
January nineteenth.
Yeah. I, I was looking at the right, uh, numerical.
Just trying, you're just trying to back and fill now.
Yeah, so if we can do that, um, that should give us time. And I'll get with the committee members to, uh, come up with a, a day that we can at least get started on, uh, some more committee work and round up the different, um, entities that need to be with us.
Hey, but, uh, before we go to the nineteenth, that, sometimes we don't meet on that week prior to Christmas. Can we go with the twelfth?
No, no, this is January.
Do the same thing. Yeah.
Nineteenth.
Here we go, nineteenth.
Well, we got, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second in the discussion?
Aye.
If not, all in favor? Uh, opposed?
Okay. Um, there are no objections to the remaining items. I'll take them all together. Zero one seven nine three authorized intergovernmental agree- Oh, I'm sorry, I take this from separate. Zero one seven nine three authorized intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County for Nevis Road extension.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
We probably moved to second in the discussion.
Well, I'll just reiterate the need to do the road appropriately, not the standards that are not what citizens expect. And, um, the money is just gonna sit there for two years to, to give my office and the citizens that will utilize that road an opportunity to be heard and even the landowners who might have desires and, and, um, of seeing it developed. Uh, they'll have frontage on that road. It's a major corridor, have a hundred feet. That'll go quickly. And i- it's pretty inappropriate, the, the way it's coming on board.
Best, you wanna amend this to say for a specific time?
No, it, that, the way it reads now is we're giving the county, you are giving the county permission to take the lead with the construction. They will let us know when they begin construction and we give a lump sum of one point five million. With, and I, I don't understand if we have an opportunity, that's was the pathway we just debated. There is, why don't you just hold up altogether then, right now? It doesn't go away. The mayor has to be the one that amends our budget to move the one point five out of Nevis Road extension. They're not asking for it to, tomorrow. And that's, that's the dynamics I don't understand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rich?
No, that's okay. I, y- 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 you're just completely not looking at the long-range planning. And that's what people expect. That's how we make things better for them. It's not to just open up a road a- and, and then talk about future subdivisions and, and commercial corridors. It's planning. It's doing it right. This is a wonderful opportunity. Why have the map of Mobile? Why bring people to the table? We know what they want. Just to keep ignoring them makes no sense. And then don't shake your head that people don't wanna come and move or live in our city. This is a wonderful opportunity. The money's not going out the door till they're ready to construct. That was the value in this resolution because I was accused of playing politics with trying to slow it down or to kill it, was the word, which is not what I'm trying to do. But by you all agreeing to the path of seeing the money tied up, it's still sitting in our treasury. It's not going anywhere.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Okay, I heard a book, book behind me. Okay, um, Mr. President, I have not seen any construction plans. I haven't seen any plans related to construction showing me anything. I heard that, that the county had engineers working on them. I haven't seen any engineering drawings. I haven't seen any construction plans. It's like what Beth said, and it's like what Councilmember Small been arguing against. This money is gonna sit there. They can't construct because they don't have no construction plan. They don't have no, no plan to construct. Nothing was mailed to us to construct Nevis Road. As a matter of fact, I didn't know they were trying to extend. I thought they were trying to work on their own Nevis Road. No one told me it was trying to extend Nevis Road at all. I got, Beth said that to me. So I'm saying, if we, if the point is, we shouldn't be placing money in a pot that we could be using on safety road and in other, and, and, and in other councils to be laying in the pot for years before they get to. That was established today. And I don't disagree. That's rock and roll.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Williams?
If I may just, you know, clarify that this is not a unique project in Pago that anytime that we partner in any way with the county on Pago, those monies are held until, until the contract's left. So we'll, we'll know. And, and, and in this case, there, there will be, well, according to Ms. Rich in her timeline, and I don't disagree with it, plenty time for changes and additions. She can discuss that with the new county commissioner, which will take, who'll take office tomorrow, and the, the next mayor of Mobile, which will be a year from now, well within that timeline that she described. You know, this may very well end up being a place mark where she adds three years of, of CIP and, and, and turns it into the, the road that the District Six residents want to have. But at this time, it's, it's time to move forward with what is on the table, known and costed. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in opposition? Item passes with a vote of five to two.
Zero-eight-eight-one-six, approved purchase order to Light Inc. for four hundred eighty-three annual subscriptions for fleet tracking, drive cam access, and driver safety management services. Zero-eight-eight-one-seven, approved purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for one-twenty, twenty-one passenger van. Zero-eight-eight-one-eight, approved purchase order to Insight Public Sector for refurbished computers. Twenty-one-eight-one-nine, authorized contract renewal for, with Chris Brewer contracting for citywide annual sidewalk repair and maintenance. Twenty-one-eight-twenty, authorized contract with H.M. Young and Associates for Sanger Theater mechanical upgrades.
So moved.
Second.
We probably moved to second in the discussion.
I would like to make a comment.
Mr. Williams?
And that is that, as discussed in our pre-council meeting, we requested that we receive verified information. There is a twenty-twenty signature by the contractor that shows fifteen percent DVE.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and thanks staff for getting that information and verifying that information. Uh, any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Item passes.
Essential COVID items being introduced for the first time, zero-one-eight-two-one through sixty-eight-three-eight.
Mr. President, I move immediate consideration of item zero-three-eight-twenty-three, zero-eight, zero-eight-eight-twenty-five, twenty-one-eight-thirty, eight-thirty-one, eight-thirty-two, fifty-eight-eight-thirty-three, sixty-eight-thirty-four, sixty-eight-thirty-six, sixty-eight-thirty-seven, sixty-eight-thirty-eight, and remainder to lay over one week pursuant to council rules.
We probably motioned a second in the discussion. Am not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
Zero-three-eight-two-three, appoint.
Not, not items passed. We'll hear from the city clerk. I'm sorry.
Zero-three-eight-two-three, appoint Eloise Taylor to the Mobile Museum of Art Board. Zero-eight-eight-two-five, approved purchase order to Game Time for shade sale replacement at Medal of Honor Park. Twenty-one-eight-three-zero, authorized contract with Neil Schaefer for the design and development of the innovate, innovating St. Louis Street Mobile Technology Corridor Project. Thirty-seven-eight-three-one, recommend, and eight-three-two, a recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-premises-only license for Old Shell Food Mart and for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for forty-one daiquiri and food, both on Old Shell Road. Fifty-eight-eight-three-three, Clarisse Noxious, Weeding Group, sixteen oh nine. Sixty-eight-three-four, approval award or special bonus for the October firefighter of the month, Fire Service Captain Samuel Allen. Sixty-eight-three-six, eight-three-seven, eight-three-eight, are determining appropriation to the New Lions Park Tennis Association, the Blessing Angels Gifting Tree, and the United Methodist Inner City Mission of Mobile serves a public purpose and approved payment. Sixty, okay, yeah, that's it.
So moved. Probably moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you. I, I appreciate that council entertaining the shade, the sales shade over the playground express. My initial thought when I was approached about it being damaged, I just assumed it was from Hurricane Sally, but I was told it was vandalized. So I have been trying to see if the city has an interest in working with my office through discretionary funds, like I do with neighborhoods, to get Project Shield and get some cameras out at Medal of Honor Park, particularly by the playground, because you cannot view it from Noelwood or from Hillcrest. And there are other areas as well, the tennis center building. So I would urge the administration to perhaps make that something that Project Shield would like to see happen, and my office would be very willing to work with them. I don't think I can absorb the entire cost, but I know that that's a well-funded aspect of Mobile policing, and it would be, it would be a really positive thing to happen at that park. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Any further discussion? Am not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed.
Call for public hearing, forty-one-eight-three-nine, forty-one-eight-fourty. Call for public hearing to consider assenting to the vacation of a portion of South Conception Street, west of Metro Jail, and assenting to the vacation of a portion of Sandy Manuel Street, east of Metro Jail, both scheduled December the eighth.
So moved.
It's been probably moved to second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is called.
Announcement.
I will start with the distinguished gentleman from the Fourth District, John Charles Williams.
Thank you very much. First of all, wish all veterans a great Veterans Day. And I would like to specifically thank my friend and resident of District Four, Commander Pete Ream, retired United States Navy, who has been selected this year as the Veteran of the Year by our Veterans Day Commission. He will, he will join a Murphy grad in the honoring, at our ceremony tomorrow at ten a.m. at the Battleship. And that is a Murphy grad, Captain Catherine Hyer, also United States Navy retired, one that has flown over seven hundred hours in space. I think sometimes my friend Pete Ream feels like he's flown as many, or walked as many miles on the graveyards and military sites of Mobile and Mobile County as he has emceed and has been in charge of so many recognition ceremonies. I cannot say enough about Pete Ream and what he has meant to this, this district as well as the city as at large. He is by far, in my opinion, the most deserving that I have seen since I came to the city. So I tip my hat to him, I salute him, and I thank him for what he will continue to do. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
No problem, Mr. Williams. We'll hear now from the distinguished gentleman from the Seventh District, Gina Gregory.
Uh, thank you. And John, I intend to be at the Veterans Day celebration tomorrow. Do you know if there's any sort of Plan B in case there is rain? Will they be going inside? Have you heard anything?
Can you hear me, John?
I don't know that answer, but I will find out and let y'all know.
Okay, yeah, I intend to be there, and like John, certainly congratulate Pete for his very well-deserved honor that we will be able to witness tomorrow. A couple of other things coming out of District Seven, the fire station at, Fire Station Number Eighteen at Museum Drive and McGregor is coming along. It's almost finished. They are still working on some last things, like the landscaping and in, inside, getting that finished. But if you've driven by lately, you have seen how really just beautiful. It's hard to say that a city building is beautiful. Generally, they are, you know, not, they're just more commercial and kind of generic in nature. But this is, this is really a good-looking fire station, and I'm really proud of it. We will have a grand opening as soon as everything is, is ready, and of course, everybody will, will be invited. The resurfacing, of course, is still coming. We're still doing some last concrete work in the district. But I expect all of that to be finished up pretty soon, and we'll start seeing the asphalt crews coming in, which I know everybody's waiting on. The Ziegler construction looks like December to get it going. And as soon as we have a better timeline on that, I'll certainly put that out in newsletters and send information out to all of the neighborhoods that live along Ziegler Boulevard. Of course, that is a long-awaited project that we're looking for. The first phase is well underway, and we haven't really had any serious complaints about traffic delays over there. So, so that's good. But once the second phase is done, it will link up both those phases of widening on Ziegler. So just looking forward to, to all of that. Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, and before I forget, did have a couple of things that, as a whole, was asking the president about continuing to meet virtually, since the governor has extended her mask order. And then also, hard to believe, but we can start looking at our Christmas holidays and should we take some time off in, in December as we normally do because of the holidays? That's something that we can at least start planning for and looking at. And that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Gregory. We appreciate all of that. And we'll hear now from the distinguished gentleman from the First District, Mr. Frederick Richardson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. On the weekend, I was riding through my district, and I was over in the Trinity Gardens area. And about five years ago, so we, we resurfaced Glass Avenue. So in going down Glass Avenue, I discovered that it was chopped up, cut and patched all the way from one end of it to the other. So I immediately sent an email to the mayor, to Jim and Nick, to say that the street is.
I'm, I'm sorry, go, go ahead, Mr. Richardson. I was making certain I had everybody in order. Keep going. On Glass Avenue. I'm listening.
All right, okay. So for them to determine what utility company cut and patched that street, because based on our regulations, our right-of-way ordinance, you can't just, just in a row, just cut this street up all the way to the end and not come back and resurface it. And I, I just don't think a utility company ought to be led to believe that they can do this to a street, and they have no responsibility. We shouldn't even be trying to find out who did it. They should on their own come back and reap and fix the street. Anyway, I also wrote a letter to SPAR and to MARS to ask them if they cut and patched Glass Avenue. I immediately heard from SPAR, who said they sent their engineers over on the street, and they did not, that is not a street that they worked on. They did not make those patches. And I've heard from MARS, from the director, Charles Holland, to say he would check on it. But it's, I want Nick and, and Jim, I want them, whoever it is, to be required to come back over there and resurface that street. And I, I see see Beth, I see see you, because you're chairman of the Public Service Committee. With the right-of-way ordinance, all that comes to, to you. And if it comes down to it, I'm gonna ask you to call the committee meeting and let, let, let the administration come and tell who they gave permission. We get, we, if they can't get down to the bottom of it, we'll get down to the bottom of it, of who is responsible for that street and, and what they're gonna do about it. We got some good news yesterday for the entire nation. It's that a company has found a vaccine for the COVID virus. And it's a matter of them trying to figure out how, I said, I think the temperature is gonna have to be real cold. They gotta keep it real cold. It's, it's gonna propose some problems in getting it to various locations, especially in the rural, rural areas. But the fact that they believe they, that they have one that is ninety percent accurate, that, that ninety percent of the time it did what they said it was going to do to get rid of the virus. So I'm looking forward to that coming to City Mobile so we can open up our businesses and move on forward, and I hope it be in the very near future. I'm hopeful. Thank you. Can you hear me, Mr. President?
Unmute, and we'll hear now from the distinguished gentleman from the Sixth District, Ms. Beth Rich.
Thank you. Of course, the Public Service Committee would be willing to sit with the administration. Understood our right-of-way ordinance that any utility who utilizes, picks up a permit and also puts a disc in the street so that people know, and each, each of the different utilities was assigned a different colored disc or initial, whatever. I didn't get into that part of it. But we gave a lot of thought on how to make that so that it was an easy line of communication. So hopefully, the, the staff in engineering and in permitting has that information that you're requesting, because they can't cut a street unless they have a city permit. So I just thought I would add that. But if we need to meet to look at that ordinance, of course, because there was a lot of time that went into that, because we don't want to damage streets that the city has already repaired, and it, it becomes costly at the end of the day. So I'll be sure to get on that. But if you'll let me know, Councilman Richardson, what you find out from the engineering department. But they should know. If they don't know, then something's wrong with the ordinance, which I hope isn't the case.
Right.
That's it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Rich. We'll hear from. We'll hear from our Vice President from the distinguished gentleman from the Third District, Mr. Small.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have been getting, um, many phone calls and also seeing citizens, um, throughout the, uh, city, you know, from across the, um, the district and outside of the district about the concerns of, um, Helenwood Park. Uh, Helenwood Park was, um, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony over a year ago where we had opened up the, uh, new pier, and unfortunately, several storms had came by and destroyed it. Uh, the city went back and repaired it. Um, the, uh, first hurricane, one of the first hurricanes that we had, Sally, came and destroyed the pier again. And then Zeta, the last hurricane that we encountered, had really had destroyed here at Helenwood Park. Uh, so therefore Helenwood Park is really, is closed, but, you know, many people's asking a question, you know, when it's going to open back up, when is the pier just going to open back up? And the thing is that the city need to really look and invest into a pier that is going to last, uh, throughout several storms and, you know, that we encounter here in Mobile, not just to go back and try to fix the, uh, same pier over and over every six to eight months. So the pier is going to be down for a while, while the park, um, administration, you know, look at different options as and for us in making the pier higher to take the pier out further into the, um, the bay, um, and et cetera. So again, asking all the citizens to please be patient, uh, while the, the park and the administration is looking at different options as far as we don't keep, you know, repairing this same pier, spending thousands and thousands of dollars every eight months, uh, because of trying to just, you know, put something together really quick. But again, that pier is going to be down for a while, and again, I do apologize to all the citizens, it's, you know, they use that pier for fishing, but, um, the city is currently looking at it to try to make something better for if this won't keep happening every eight to, you know, nine months, every time we have a bad storm that comes through the area. Also, I would like to, uh, fortunately, you know, um, you know, as Mr. Richardson had mentioned about the coronavirus, and that the vaccine, you know, was, um, was announced on yesterday, and I'm just looking at the news, um, clip. They say that experts predict the US could soon hit two hundred thousand cases daily of coronavirus, and as, you know, the country tops the ten million infections. And, um, the last couple of days, we have been getting news articles that different art bra parades have been counseling. And unfortunately, you know, because of this pandemic, uh, the Parades of Threes, which is hosted by myself, um, CJ, uh, District Three, and Barbara Drummond, House One O Three, we're going to council this year because of the pandemic. Uh, something I hate to do, but lives are more important, safety is more important than just to, you know, go out and catch some candy and have a good time. You know, for, hopefully that, you know, the next coming years that, you know, we can get the parades started back up, but this year, we're going to have to council because of the pandemic, and we had several dance groups, you know, different people calling us, you know, asking us questions, you know, about are we going for, are we still having a parade? But this year, we're not because of the pandemic. But hopefully next year that things will settle down a whole lot more than what it is today, that we can share, uh, the joys of Christmas as we have done for the past several years. And that's most of my announcement, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And last but certainly not least, we'll hear from the distinguished gentleman from the Fifth District, Mr. Joel Thomas Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm particularly delighted, of course, that we passed a resolution today honoring our veterans and honoring, honoring, uh, Mr. Eddie Erby, who has been tireless in his effort to restore, uh, the cemetery and to honor our veterans. I'm also happy that, uh, Commander Ream is going to receive, uh, uh, the award that he's going to, which he so richly deserves for his tireless service on behalf of, of the armed services and the veteran community. Um, you know, our, the, the men and women who have fought in our armed forces since the beginning of our country have fought to defend, uh, the Constitution of the United States and our way of life. Uh, they have come, they, they have come from every ethnicity, they have come from every political party, they have come from, uh, every corner of the country. We have sometimes, uh, and even today, I believe, have immigrants in our armed services. So, uh, these men and women, um, fight for the way of life we all enjoy, regardless of political party. And they deserve to be honored in this way, not only on this day, but every day. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and, and I certainly would begin my announcements by concurring with yours. We want to thank all of our veterans, who have so freely given of their time and their physical and mental, uh, abilities in order to serve this country and in order to make this world a better and more secure place. Uh, I often dreamed of, in my youth, serving in the military, my dream did not quite work out. I'm sure I would have been counseled out for a multiplicity of reasons, uh, but I got to serve in another army, and I'm trying to hold up the bloodstained banner in that army as well as I can. So to all of our veterans, thank you, not just on the official Veterans Day, uh, but we try to show our appreciation, uh, when we run up on a veteran, when we interact with one, because they're certainly worthy of all of our gratitude and all of our appreciation. Uh, I want to thank the citizens of District Two for this great opportunity to be your voice and to be your representative. We've made a lot of progress over the last seven years. We've got a lot of projects that we need to open up, from the new basketball court on MLK to the new playground at Hope Center, to the new playground at Rickaby Center, Rickaby Park, uh, to the new community Pocket Park in Lafayette Heights. Uh, there's just so much that's going on in District Two, uh, that I really could probably belabor this meeting another hour to talk about it, but I won't. Just know that we're on the job, and even though we're not having our community meetings, I am available if you need my help, lmanz@cityofmobile.org, two five one five zero nine four two three nine. Let me know how I can be of some assistance in connecting you to the proper authorities with your issue. Uh, that concludes my announcements. No, 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 I want to say one more thing. Uh, and I don't know if this has already been mentioned, but it was brought to my attention, uh, about, uh, and I know Mr. Richardson knows this gentleman well, a longtime city employee, Mr. Marion Shepherd. Mr. Marion Shepherd, I believe he was in the employ of the city for over fifty-one years, touched so many lives all across this region, husband to Ms., uh, Maddie Shepherd, uh, s- s- song director, choir director, praise team director, extraordinary, just a great couple. When you saw one, you saw the other, he was always inspiring, he was always helpful, he had a heart for young people, he loved the church, uh, he passed recently. And we want to express to the Shepherd family, uh, to the true values Stone Street families, uh, our sincerest condolences. Mobile has truly lost a great citizen, a great civic-minded, church-minded, community-minded citizen. And I just wanted to make certain, that was brought to my attention last night, and I didn't know if we recognized it or not, but I wanted to say something. And Mr. Richardson, I'm sure you want, might want to add in something to that.
Yeah, I would like to say that I believe that we ought to, uh, on na- on next, uh, Tuesday, um, add, uh, Brother Marion Shepherd to the list for silent prayer for the family. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't think about that today, but, uh, he, he, his family is, he is worried for us to, to hold a moment of silent prayer for him next Tuesday, and I would look forward to us doing that. I knew, I knew his daddy, um, his daddy worked at the U.S. Postal Service with me. I've been knowing Shepherd almost all of, almost all of his life. And, um, Maddie, uh, too, they were members of Stone Street Baptist Church, outstanding family Maddie. Also, um, 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 she developed, uh, cheerleaders, uh, and people of that nature all over, um, at Baker and other places, so she is, uh, instrumental in, uh, helping young people. She, she has dedicated her life to that, he dedicated his life to the same. And, uh, I think he's worried, and I think we'll do that next week.
Absolutely, Mr. Richardson, absolutely. Any, any further announcements? If not, do I hear motion?
So moved.
We're probably moved in second, any discussion? All in favor? So let me know when it's on about, aye?
Aye.